They've always had good programming there and everything. All right, calling to order the June seventeenth, twenty twenty-five meeting of the Long Lake City Council. Good evening, everyone. It's six thirty-two P M. And all council members are present this evening. Item two is the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, a fair, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item three is Mayor's Comments, Long Lake News Meeting Review and Updates. So, City Council just finished a work session where we mostly talked about some upcoming roof replacement for City Hall and some other capital improvements to City Hall in the coming months and years. So that wraps, that was what that was about. And other than that, just summer's in the air. It's been great weather lately. Rain's, rain's coming down. Good to see people out and about, going to get ice cream or going to the restaurant or those types of things using our, our local parks and beaches. Looking forward to hearing about Buckhorn Days twenty twenty-five here in a few minutes. So hopefully everybody's having a great start to the summer so far. Other than that, we'll talk about a couple of fire department updates later in the agenda. And besides that, nothing major, nothing of significance last couple of weeks here since our last council meeting. So with that, we'll move to item number four, which is to approve this evening's agenda. We'll entertain.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second.
All right, motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Carries unanimously. Item five, Consent Agenda. Items A through D on the consent agenda this evening, including approving a six-month probationary status extension for a public works maintenance worker and approving issuance of a special event permit for the fifty-first Annual Corn Days Parade on August ninth, twenty twenty-five, which maybe we'll get a little update about that as well this evening. But any questions from staff regarding items on the consent agenda?
I just have a quick question regarding the McLean. We had some repairs on that. Is that now operational?
Yes.
Okay.
That's good.
Any other questions for staff? All right, if not, I'll entertain a motion to approve this evening's consent.
I'll make a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda.
I'll second.
Thank you. Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries unanimously. Item six is Open Correspondence. Open Correspondence is an item on the agenda in which the public may address the city council. No formal action is taken by the city council and comments should be limited to five minutes or less. And open correspondence may also be mailed to City Sapp by noon on the date of the meeting. Any submitted open correspondence?
Nothing, thank you.
Okay. So with that, we'll move on to item seven, Regular Business. Item seven A, Special Event Permit Request for Buckhorn Days twenty twenty-five. Jeanette, you're gonna.
Thank you, Mayor. Before you is the annual special event permit request for Buckhorn Days. Typically, I tend to put on the consent stuff when they're pretty routine and the event is kind of same to same year to year. Uh, has some new stuff. And I, I think I'd turn that over and invite representing the chamber um, to come up about that.
Terrific. Good evening, Mayor Schneider. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Minor, council staff, Marty Schneider. Eleven seventy-six West Wayzetta Boulevard, representing the chamber this evening. We changed the scope of Buckhorn Days this year significantly, I would say. Changes, I'll start at the morning. The carp fishing tournament is going to start again. Last time was twenty twenty-two, and it was a separate event from Buckhorn. It's gonna be part of Buckhorn Days. We've filed correct permitting. That's in the works right now. And it is going to be essentially under the chamber umbrella of the day. However, it's going to be actually put forth, we'll say sponsored, by the Long Lake Waters Association. So the Waters Association, as we know, is engaged in, as the presentation was last month, to along with the watershed district, help clean up the area, the watershed. And we know that carp are very invasive, so this will be kind of a, a, I would say, a very public awareness campaign on their part to tell us more about what they do and hopefully we'll catch a few fish as well. The second item that happens in the morning, before anything gets started with music, the fire department, which traditionally has their five K at the end of July, running out of station number one, they approached here with the idea of perhaps blending it into Buckhorn Days so that the runners can have a bigger experience after the run with music, kids' activities, et cetera. And it was sort of brought up conceptually last year. Given the politics of the day, shall we say, nothing was pursued. This year it was brought up again. I know a number of you and I have spoken over the last month or two. Well, at the end of the day, the fire department and the committee within the fire department that made these decisions decided, hey, let's, let's bring it on to Buckhorn Days. The one thing I want to make very clear, I spoke to Chief Highland. This is not going to be a chamber event. It is gonna always stay a fire department event. So want to make that distinction. We're not take anything over. This is their event within kind of the platform of Buckhorn Days. The other nice thing, and I think probably many of you know more about this than I do, but apparently there might be a name reveal coming up here shortly for the new fire department?
Could be. Still, yeah, more discussions come on that to be, to be continued.
To be continued. So that may be something that is blended into the P R as we get closer to round twelve. So the run is going to, and I'll kind of put this up here as a reference. So the fire department run is gonna, registration starts at nine thirty, ends right around noon, and it's gonna take the route that follows the traditional Gear West route, which is up the lake path, as we call it, crossing the bridge over one twelve and then circling back through Hardin Park. I'm not sure if it's running clockwise or counterclockwise, but it's all that same route. I think that's all been discussed already with staff thoroughly. And then they had asked, the fire department, could we start music a little early? So we actually found another band, Stampede. Many of you might know, like southern rock, they've been around the area. They're gonna start at noon. So we'll have music starting at noon. We'll have the kids' activities, the inflatables all set to go. So it's really meant to be a bit of a follow-through to the five K by the fire department. Food trucks, refreshments, jumpy houses, another addition, I would say. We're seeing how it all happens and works out. I'll just put this here. The Lions decided, you know, we'd like to emphasize the car show a little bit more than we have in the past years. The past years, it was more just a smaller show. So on the west side of the park, where usually there's the Frisbee Golf Tournament, the Frisbee Golf has been eliminated because usually there were only two or three participants. And again, the Lions basically take the initiative on the car show, which we were fine with them doing. And so that's going to go from noon to three, as you can see on the agenda here. Still gonna have the beanbag toss, very popular amongst all ages, and doggy races from four to five. And then additional item that is new to the agenda this year is we will be bringing in the Midwest All-Star Wrestling Group. And that is a name you might recognize. It is Vern Gagne's old organization. Not Vern Gagne, he won't be appearing. His old organization, and in fact, this is the ring that they used to use. I'd encourage you all to look up their website, M A W, Midwest All-Star Wrestling. I really would encourage, this is not a one-off for them. They do this throughout many, many different communities in the Twin Cities and in the state. It is an all-ages show, family-friendly, a lot of hoopla, et cetera, et cetera. You can see this is their poster that they'll be using to publicize. And, you know, we're thinking there might be room for, say, a
To do council?
Uncle SmackDown.
I think I'm busy.
So everybody should get loosened up and as you all know, you never know from me what to expect that day. So, so that'll be a fun, fun, I think, interlude. We will not be having fireworks this year. Main reason is the expense went up according to the fireworks supplier because of tariffs. We don't know if that's entirely accurate, but they were looking for about seventy-five hundred dollars for a ten-to-fifteen-minute show. And our friends at Midwest All-Star Wrestling are doing a two-hour show for about half of that, a little less than half of that. So with, I think, a lot more community engagement. So other than that, items that we've coordinated and talked about, the fire department will have a presence there again for their five K. They'll be looking to position some of the ladder trucks on Syme Street, welcoming the runners in. And then we'll have a presence throughout the day with some of their units for families, children to engage with. They'll have a booth there as well, as they have in the past. And then Wayzetta P D, Jeanette can speak to that a little bit more with the new chief there, but they're gonna have a presence there throughout the day, which we're very grateful for with a, you know, public outreach booth tent as well. The one item that I did not cover with Jeanette that kind of came up just as a thought as I was driving in here tonight, as part of our request, if there were to be the possibility, if we get the need for some overflow parking, we've got the bank already segmented, got an agreement with Patch down at the shopping center. However, if there might be a chance to, if there's overflow to open up the old B P lot, if that's a possibility, again, that would be very welcome, just to know that that's in our back pocket as a possibility should we run into a big crowd for the wrestling match. With that, I'll ask if there are any questions or follow-up. And again, I think it'll be a very, very nice day. The hope is that we keep building the festival. Maybe following years it might go to two days again, so it wouldn't just be in name-only Buckhorn Days, but in reality, Buckhorn Days, Saturday and Sunday, as it once was.
Terrific. I don't think you've been putting a lot of work into this, Marty, so we appreciate all your efforts on that.
Great things for our business. We're happy to. I know it's technically in Orno, but Talavera. They'll again have their food truck there. They open up a nice, as we know, of course, nice location in our, you know, service district for the chamber. And we're thrilled, needless to say, that Doc Hartnett is expanding. All those things are, you know, part of the business community, part of our community that, you know, having worked in Wayzetta for decades, there used to be a veterinarian on Lake Street, no more now, of course, et cetera, et cetera. So good things, I think, are happening in the business community, which I think helps all of us in many ways.
Spoke with Doc Hartnett yesterday. He said that he's too, we're too short of a quartet, so no Doc.
I'll just comment that, you know, I've, I've got a, shall we say, sometimes some leverage with Doc. He's always saying that leading up to the show. He's a bit of a temperamental artist. His music, not his profession, but his music, so.
And still a chance.
I would say not to play on words, but stay tuned.
Nice, nice.
Is this agenda on the website somewhere?
Of course. We always like to follow protocol, John. Pending tonight's approval. It will be posted in the next two days, yes.
All right.
I will tell you just very briefly, we have a really broad range of music. Six, possibly seven acts of music if we can fit it in. So it'll be a full afternoon, full evening of good stuff going on. But yes, pending, pending a affirmative vote, we will be again pushing out our P R as we do.
Great. Other questions for, for Marty? Great. Well, we appreciate your work on this, Marty, and looking forward to good weather that day and everything and.
And then, yeah, if you let us know if the B P lot were to be available, weather permitting. One thing I'll mention, just reminded me, certainly the car show, should it be bad weather or the turf too wet, car show would be moved elsewhere, probably to the bank parking lot.
Okay.
Again, we want to be sensitive to that, of course.
And we do have that in the event permit conditions as well.
Okay.
Just wanted to acknowledge that.
Was it the Pioneer Museum a year or two ago? I thought the car show got moved over there or?
Well, we, we moved it over there and again, as you understand politics, there was some politics with the Lions Club where they really wanted to initiate a more, shall we say, a larger scope car show. And so we, again, not with the, you know, there, there's always two sides to every discussion. And so there are some that feel a little bad about that, but the room was somewhat limited up at the Pioneer Museum. But we're hoping to reintegrate the Pioneer Museum in other ways going down the road.
Gotcha.
All right.
Food for thought, but a future Wild West show out there? I might even have a connection on that one.
Wow.
I think that's a wonderful idea.
I, I met some folks who actually run a Wild West show when I was camping this year. And they recently just did a great one up, but
Display, yes.
They do all sorts of fun stuff.
Consider that already as part of next year's.
I'll see if I can track down that business card for you.
Nice.
Might push us over into the Sunday then.
And, and before you sit down, I know it hasn't been approved yet, but Buckhorn Days Parade will be on Saturday.
Let me briefly cover.
Well, it has been approved, actually. It has been approved.
And again, we, you know, working a little bit ahead of schedule on that. But I want to really emphasize, so, and again, thank you, Jeanette, for all the help. Applications are already out for the event. It is gonna be, as you can see there, August ninth. A little bit of a nuance, it will be starting at eleven A M., not at noon. So an hour earlier. I can't tell you exactly why, but it was a very, very determined request by the staff at St. George's Church. So I don't know if they wanted more time for the festival after the parade or what, you know, you'll have to ask them, but we're okay with that. Should be the same. I guess what I'd say is to all of you, please plan accordingly so that City of Long Lake, as always, very well represented with your float, fire truck, however, you know, it's being done. And I'm hopeful, and this is just my comment, not otherwise observation by others, but last year there was a little bit of, shall we say, tenderness amongst the different fire departments of whether or not they should show up or not show up, given politics of the day. And again, we expect that perhaps some of those concerns have been now either smoothed over or are in the process of healing. So we're really looking forward to a big first responder response as well going into this year.
Agreed. I think we'll be, I think that'll be much smoother this year, I'd vision.
So, yes, thank you for approving that as well, and that'll be a nice, nice event, as it always is.
Yeah. Great. Thank you, Marty. All right, anyone wish to make a motion?
Before you do, may I make a suggestion to help because there are a lot of permits associated with this? If I may suggest, a, a motion could be as simple as motion to adopt the resolution approving issuance of special event permit S twenty twenty-five dot eight for the Buckhorn Days twenty twenty-five one-day festival and to approve all other licenses and permits as identified in the staff report.
Okay.
That's what Jeanette said.
I make a motion to approve what Jeanette said.
All right, all right. Well, I'll make a motion, adopt resolution number twenty twenty-five dash eighteen, approving issuance of special event permit S twenty twenty-five dash zero eight for the Buckhorn Days twenty twenty-five one-day festival to be held on July twelfth, twenty twenty-five and to approve all other subsequent later permits, something like that.
As identified in the staff report.
Identified in the staff report.
Thank you so much.
I'll second that.
Thank you. All right, motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries unanimously.
May I add just one comment before we move on real quick? That Midwest All-Star Wrestling, Mr. Schneider is, not kidding, it looks like so much fun. After he told me about it, I couldn't resist looking it up and I may have squealed and giggled quite a bit at how delightful it looks. So excited to see something new and out of the box at Buckhorn Days. I think it'll be really cool. I hope it'll, you know, get the crowd excited and hyped up a little bit. I'm just excited to see what Buckhorn Days is bringing this year.
That sounds different, something different. Jesse the Body Ventura, is he gonna be there? Or is that not official?
We can only hope.
Have you seen him recently?
No.
It's my understanding that there was gonna be perhaps a food truck that appeared seasonally here in town. We talked to the chamber about that. Of course, that truck would be welcome on Syme Street with our other food trucks the day of. Jeanette, if you want to give me their number or if you want to contact them.
Will do. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for mentioning that about the, the B P station or the B P lot there, and that was the only conflict, so.
I will be checking on that and following through on that.
Let us know, and we've got plenty of room for that.
Will do. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Gavin.
Thank you, Marty. All right, terrific. With that, we'll move on to item seven B, approved twenty twenty-five city street seal coating project. Sean?
Good evening, Mayor, council members. My topic isn't nearly as exciting as Buckhorn Days ever, corn, uh, corn days, but it's just as important nonetheless. Uh, before you tonight, I got a project that I thought was gonna die in twenty twenty-five. I really did. Uh, had two strikes against it up to about a week ago. And I thought we were gonna be better off doing it in twenty twenty-six. However, things have kind of changed a bit. And I'm asking the council to motion to award this project uh, to our seal coating contractor, contractor Pearson Brothers out of Hanover in the amount of fifty-nine thousand, eight hundred and nineteen dollars and seventeen cent, or seventy-six cents, sorry. Little bit of history, back in the fall of twenty twenty-four, we were looking at the next seal coating project, and it was decided that the industrial park would probably be a good candidate. Uh, there's been portions of it sealed and portions of it's not, and it's getting to the point where the whole thing needs to be resealed and sealed back up. Um, last fall, I had gotten a budgetary number from our contractor for seventy-five thousand. That would have been covering the entire industrial park and it came out, it got trimmed to sixty thousand, and so without changing the scope of the project, the scope or the project was over budget for what we had. And in addition to that, we had fiber optic contractor come in in the spring, late spring of twenty twenty-five with little to no warning uh, to the city of Long Lake. And so that was strike two. Um, that was right of our scheduled seal coating date. So, so with those two strikes against us, we were looking at doing it twenty twenty-six. However, the contractor called me a week ago Monday wanting to know what we could do to keep the project alive. And I told him, well, we need to reschedule it to get our fiber crews in and out of the area so we're not fighting each other, try to get your job done and their job done at the same time. Uh, we initially had scheduled it in June to piggyback with Medina and I think it was Loretto. Anyway, so that kind of fell through with that. And so then we decided that if you can get it done in August and keep the scope the same and get it to fit in our budget, we will certainly look at it. Well, by Thursday afternoon, all the moons and stars aligned, and here we are. Uh, so we were able to accommodate the project as it originally scoped to do the entire industrial park. We were looking at taking West Industrial off the scope and coming back and doing that later to fit into the sixty thousand dollar budget. Um, but I really didn't want to do that either, going back to Chase's Street on one project was not really what I was looking at. But, um, so we, we got the quote and the scope stayed the same. And they came to our proposed budget for our final budget, number of sixty thousand, actually just slightly less. And they're able to work it in in August and keep the partnership with the other cities alive too. So it's been a giant mass of coordination the last seven to ten days to to potentially see this project come to life again. So we're looking for the motion from the council to, to move it along. So with that, I'll take any questions.
Questions for Sean? Appreciate your creative problem solving there and getting the, the numbers down a bit and keeping the project going this year. And appreciate, you know, crews have been out filming potholes last week or so, and nice seeing some of that maintenance done as well. And I imagine you'll, you'll get your street sweeper running again. Is that gonna be probably we see out in that here in another week or two?
It's been out a few times. We did the initial wave, and then we've been kind of running behind where we've been patching to kind of clean that up too, so.
Sure.
You'll see it coming.
Nice.
If we have the staff to run it.
Okay. All right, any other questions for Sean?
You know, I, I see the list of the streets and you, I know you already probably addressed this, but it looks like it's pretty much everything.
Everything in the industrial park.
So, that's good.
I'll make a motion to award the twenty twenty-five city street seal coating project to Pearson Brothers, Inc. of Hanover, Minnesota in the amount of five, fifty-nine thousand, eight hundred and twenty-nine dollars and seventy-six cents.
I'll second that.
Oh, did I say, is it eight hundred and nineteen? Nine, eight, nineteen, seventy-six. I'm sorry.
All right, motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries unanimously.
Thanks, Sean.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, and item seven C, Fire Department Transition and Future Fire Services News and Updates. This is typically on our council agenda. Just a couple of quick updates for me would be that we met a couple, a couple of weeks ago, met with some officials from the Excelsior Fire District and got some feedback from them, some elected officials, on what, what their successes have been over the last twenty-plus years and some maybe areas, suggestions that they had for us. So I thought that was a really good meeting and good feedback from them. Represented some Orno there, as well as Long Lake and Medina and Minnetoga Beach, some staff as well. There's something that's occurred since we met last. Otherwise, we've, you know, continued, both cities, Long Lake and Orno, continue to work on a draft joint powers agreement and kind of having some productive back, back and forth conversation. conversations and dialogue on that.
Are you working on, with any other cities in addition to Orno, in Medina, or?
Those are the initial two that we're working with, but we're also kind of keeping Minnetaka Beach and Medina as well.
Okay.
Yep. But so those are some updates from me, quick updates. Anybody else?
I'll just add to, to that. I don't know if everybody knows, the Excelsior Fire District is actually a JPA, very similar to what we're looking to create. It's not a true district. It is a JPA, and it's, it includes five cities of Excelsior, Deep Haven, Shorewood, Tonka Bay, and Greenwood. And so, it was a really good meeting, actually, for us to see what they went through, the good, the good, the bad, and, and the challenges, and the benefit, and all of that. So, I'm hoping that we can incorporate that into, into our agreement, or some of that into our agreement with Orno, and, and, yeah, I mean, it's, right now, I think the JPA will have Medina as planned to be part of that.
Yeah, right, right.
So, it'll be the three cities, but then we've also talked, inviting Minnetaka Beach to be part of it, but it, it all's gonna kind of depend on how the numbers come out, I think. But ultimately, I think, you know, we, we would want, we would want more cities to be part of this as well. So, this is kind of a, a starting point that hopefully will grow to, to a bigger organization.
Yeah, that was very, very good, and a lot of good signs for the future. So, it was interesting to learn, Excelsior Fire District is, is very much based on paid-on-call firefighters. Like, they didn't, I expect, and they had more part-time, but they're very, they're good. I heard from Wayzetta recently, too, they're doing very well with recruiting paid-on-call firefighters. Excelsior is, is full, currently fully staffed with paid-on-call firefighters, and.
Yeah, that was interesting to me, because we've been hearing a lot about how the paid-on-call model is, is, you know, dropping off. I mean, they're just not getting volunteers like they used to get. However, it seems like Excelsior and Long Lake Fire have been bucking that trend, and now with Long Lake, you know, going with Orno and creating a new JPA, I think, just the news of that, I, I'd learned that there was three more applicants, you know, so I think there's, there's going to be a strong paid-on-call presence in this new, new JPA, which is, which is encouraging. So, I, I, the, the paid-on-call model isn't necessarily dead yet, at least not in, in our area in Excelsior, so, yeah, I thought that was good news.
Yeah, so there's a couple of good updates there on fire departments topics. All right, so with that, we'll move on to item eight, other business. Councilmember newcomer?
Uh, not a lot. I met with Andrew Meyer briefly the other day, coffee. That was well-attended. He actually had a number of people there he was having a conversation with about numerous things. At the end of that, him and I got to sit and talk fire district stuff for quite a while.
Got it.
That was good.
Was that before or after the, the session ended, the special session? Was that within the last week and a half, or was that prior to that? I was curious.
It's when he had his coffee here, so what was that, a week and a half?
Yeah, probably just before that, then, yeah.
Just before, I think it kicked off, so, yeah.
Got it, got it. All right, that's a good update. Thank you.
He was very supportive of everything that's been going on, and, and even any future endeavors we may look into, so.
Nice. All right, Councilmember Feldman?
I'm good, thank you.
Councilmember Dynek?
Um, so I'll just comment on the, the lake water quality was really bad a few weeks ago. There was like a, an algae bloom that I'd never seen before, and a lot of us were talking about, like, what's going on here? So, I talked to some from the watershed, not the watershed, just the lake association, just to ask if there's anything that was happening. I, I know that the, the watershed district was gonna be looking at some holding ponds, or maybe improving those, and I didn't know if something was going on that might have released a lot of phosphorus or something into the lake, but they weren't aware of anything. But, but, but then, almost as quickly as it came, it's at least the last couple of days, I don't know how it is down by your end, but the water seems to be pretty clear again. And, I mean, it was at the point where it was like, not even usable. I mean, you couldn't even, yeah, I mean, like, if you went in, you'd come out with green slime on you. And so, I'm glad that, that it was just a temporary thing. Who knows if it's gonna come again, but it's almost like it choked itself out, and now it's actually pretty clear again. So, so I'm thankful for that, because I didn't want for us to have a lake all summer that was unusable. And I saw the, you know, that the, the beach has been closed, but is that open again yet, or not?
Yeah.
I actually opened it back up, watching the pea soup crash the, into the sand.
Yeah.
That day.
Yeah. That's kind of weird, weird thing, but, yeah. So, I'm looking forward to a good summer of, of lake use for everybody that, that uses it, so glad to see that.
I'm not sure what's worse, the PC algae bloom of this year, or the couple of years, many years ago. Not sure if anyone here remembers, but we went through a couple of pretty nasty fish kills.
Well, they, they killed a number of fish this time, too.
Did it?
Yeah, I had probably a couple dozen dead fish, like.
We had a lot more than that. I remember, more like in the hundreds.
Really? Yeah.
Yeah, we had a couple gruesome years where that happened, and it, it was, that was pretty rough, but, yeah, I'm not sure what's less pleasant. What's a toss-up?
Yeah. Well, maybe, yeah, I thought they usually go hand in hand, but.
Yeah.
How does the lake get monitored for algae blooms, especially ones that are like more of a toxic nature?
I do not actually know the answer to that question.
That would be a DNR or county thing.
There was a, a few, a number of years ago where I thought there was some blue-green algae on, on the lake, which is that dangerous kind?
There were some notices that were posted, like, don't let your dogs swim.
And this wasn't even that, apparently. This was just like, really unpleasant.
Yes, yes. Yeah, I mean, my hope has always been, you know, since Hennepin County was out there, you know, once, twice a week sampling the beach, obviously, they would have observed those conditions. Whatever it was, they didn't seem to be concerned enough to contact us about it. So, yeah, that, that's a good question, and it's one I've actually been asked a lot.
It's not unique to your lake either.
No, it's just, it's just, I'm just more curious, like, walking dogs and stuff.
Yeah.
Like, I know I've, I've had my dog swimming, and then I get home and go, oops.
Yep.
Well, and you know, the, the, there was that carp harvesting effort a number of years ago, and I, I thought that was gonna continue with them trying to sort of catch them where they spawn, up the creek, and, and then that didn't happen for some reason, because they didn't, you know, they didn't go the way they thought they were gonna go that year. And so, I don't know that a lot more has happened with that, which I thought they could have done some more, but, but, yeah, you know, that's, that's, that's a big part of the problem, because they're bottom feeders, and they stir up the bottom, they release that phosphorus that's in the bottom, and that kind of creates all the.
Promote the carp fishing contest.
Yeah, I know. I was gonna ask Marty if we could have a carp fishing contest every day.
Yep, I actually, one of my questions to Mr. Schneider had been, does Waters Association have a flyer yet for the carp fishing contest? So, yeah, we'll be doing, now that Buckhorn Days is approved. Exactly. We'll be doing a lot more promotion, and I just have to push an extra emphasis on that carp contest. I thought I recall something, though, about while the Waters Association had grand ambitions of another project, something about that they'd actually come to the conclusion, based on their harvest and collection efforts, that actually the load of carp was, was sustainable by a mess.
Yeah, yeah.
And they didn't have to move forward, but.
Well, I, I read that, too. I don't know if I buy that entirely, but I think you could always take more out. But it probably helped.
And then to piggyback on the water quality stuff, now we got our feedback from a couple residents today about the beach and everything, and so it's, I guess, the main thing there is Public Works kind of committed to trying to do what they, what you guys can to clean that up on a daily basis and that sort of thing, and didn't know much about that till today, so haven't been down there yet, but, okay.
We've got some issues there, so.
All right, thanks for efforts on that. All right, anything else, John?
No, that's it.
All right. Me, just, and I should start off with this, the mayor comments. Obviously, very sad, sad weekend for our state, and, and what happened to our, our led, our members of legislature and their spouses, and, you know, they all stepped forward to be public servants like we have, and we're, we're dealing with different issues than they're dealing, but nobody should have to go through that for policy decisions that they've made, or considering making, or that sort of thing. So, it's just a terrible way to wake up on Saturday morning to all that going on, and thinking about, I reached out to Representative Myers, and, and didn't have the direct contact information for our Senator Ann Johnson Stewart, but I know that it was a tough weekend for them as well, and all their colleagues. So, our city is thinking about them in, in this time, and thankful for the law enforcement for working all weekend to catch, catch the suspect, and a lot of those folks who didn't spend Father's Day with their kids and families and stuff, so it's just a tough weekend, and, and hopefully we don't have to experience anything like that again. Besides that, I'll be going to the League of Minnesota Cities Conference next, later next week in Duluth, so I don't, I don't think anybody else is going from this group, but you're always encouraged to go. I know several members of Orno City Council and other city councils are going. That's a good educational opportunity there, so maybe pencil, think about that for, for next year. Looking forward to that. And, yeah, that is, and then bonding, you know, so bonding bill, I think everybody kind of knows, bonding bill was passed, I think, last Monday or so, about a week ago, and that did not include, you know, our request as, as Long Lake's request, did not include any really local requests, like, you know, Minnetaka Beach, and Mound, and Minatrista, and quite a, quite a number of cities around us were asking for money for their bonding requests, and there was not enough money to go around, of course, for all the city-type projects. So, I do, so I think we're gonna need to kind of go to Plan B with, you know, our, our road project, and, and figure out the, other options for that. So, I think we'll talk about that in the coming month or two. I'd like to have a work session to talk about that, and get some feedback from staff and that sort of thing, and, and talk about, you know, what some options are. Somebody already said, you know, maybe next year, but I think that's, I think, I think money's not gonna be getting any looser, so to speak, at the legislature, with all the demands that are out there, and a lot of the demands, a lot of the priorities seem to be going to water, you know, water projects, and, and that sort of thing. So, little update there on the bonding bill?
I wonder if we, we don't get any local government aid, right? And, and I don't get, I, I understand there's a formula for that, but it seems like we ought to be a candidate for that, being the small city that we are. And, and I was wondering if, like, talking to Andrew Meyer, or anybody, you know, at state level.
I actually was just in, I've been doing webinars lately, and I told Jeanette, I was like, there's a process to appeal, the local government aid.
Yeah.
And she's like, what? I was like, there's a process, so I'm gonna look more into it and see.
Yeah, please do.
There is a formula. Don't get me wrong. There is a formula.
Yep.
There may not be a lot that they do, but there is, there is an appeal process, so.
I actually did a little looking and found like a handout about it, and what the factors are, and, in, in a little more English and less spreadsheet, so that was kind of interesting, so.
And so the timing on that, yeah, so we do have a note. The timing on that, it said in my webinar, that we would find out in July about local government aid, and then we would have sixty days to appeal, and so.
And it's gonna be zero, right? We're gonna.
It's gonna be zero, but it's on my radar.
And meanwhile.
So, I have to wait until after the July.
Meanwhile, there's small cities all around us that get a lot.
Yeah, like I said, I have no idea what the appeal process is, or if it's even gonna be worth it, but it is, we have sixty days.
But having something like that, that would help, you know, these road projects.
If anything, if we're, I mean, if we appeal it every year, then maybe we just become a squeaky wheel.
I know that there was legislation, either it was this year or last year, that they were trying to adjust the formula, or do something with the LGA. I don't remember what, quite what they were trying to do, but it was almost gonna give us an option to get like eighty thousand or something, or there's a proposal for that.
Yeah, there was this year. Andrew Meyer, I'm talking about as well, where I've been. We're not the only city and district that does not receive that, and it's, yeah.
Yeah, but the ones that, other ones that don't receive it are generally bigger, and, you know, more.
Median house price, and.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I don't understand why, what, because your, if your houses, the housing stock was built in the fifties or sixties, why that impacts.
It's before nineteen forty.
Is it, really?
Yeah, I actually did a little reading up on this when I found that handout. There's also some specific criteria to small cities that I noticed in this handout. But, yeah, I, I don't see any reason why, well, whether the factors fit or not, why can't we?
It's on our radar, for sure.
Yeah, yeah. One other thought I have, too, is, I don't know that, have we ever really, I don't know if you've done, maybe you have, maybe you and Sean have, looked into whether there's any kind of grants that could help with Grand Ave, just because it's a main connector.
I mean, you know, that's what I think all the money got bonded to, was more grant-oriented projects. It wasn't, they didn't do cities, but they gave it more to general.
Right, I think there's roots to that, right, in partnerships. I mean, yeah, we look at Brown Road here because it's a, you know, a connector road between County Route Six and County One Twelve that qualified for state aid and that type of thing, but.
That's, that's a local road. That part of Brown is Orno. That's not a county road.
It is. No, it's a city road. There, there's a qualifier for that, because it's a thoroughfare for other communities and stuff.
So, they got a grant to do that whole thing, or part, part of it?
I don't know if they call it a grant, or just funding for it, but it's, I think all or most of it was paid for, from either the county or the state, from the council mayor I watched, yeah.
I'm just intrigued, because it is a connector, again, linking up with Brown Road, with County Route One Forty-Six, that is a main connection point for like, all of our neighbors to access that road. I just, there's a lot of neighborhoods and a lot of residences back there that are all using Grand Ave as a main thoroughfare. I, I just, I don't know if we've done, how much looking we've done into that. Sean, maybe you would know, have we looked into county grants at all for connector roadways to county roads, and see if there's anything there?
The only thing we have is the CAM fund.
Okay.
What's that saying for?
Community, that's what we're using for your speed limit signs.
Oh, okay.
But is Brown Road a state? Is it funded or?
County Road One Forty-Six.
Yep.
No, no, but I mean, the part of Brown, that's north of One Twelve. That's not a county road.
It's a county road.
Nope. That's Orno. North of One Twelve, it's, it's Orno.
So, who's paying for it?
Well, that's what I'm asking.
The county or the state, because there's a, there's a qual, there's a designator for those types of roads that are, serve the public, the greater public than just that city itself, and, and there's an act for it.
It's a county road south of Wayzetta Boulevard, but not north.
Right.
So, it, that Brown Road connects.
It connects, connects County Road Six to County One Twelve.
So, that a couple hundred yards is Orno?
Yeah.
Yep, yep.
Are you sure?
Positive.
Ninety-nine percent sure. But, yeah, we can look at, you know, those, Orno would know.
Almost positive. Pretty sure, because I looked into this a while ago, because I, I thought, oh, that's strange, that it's not a county road north of Wayzetta Boulevard.
Well, I have a hard time finding that the county's gonna fund it if it isn't a county road.
No, but that's what I'm asking, is that a state, did the state fund it?
All right, well, yeah, to be continued, as Marty would say, but we, and Jeff Oliver, I think he'd be a good resource, too. He's pretty familiar with some of the funding opportunities out there and that sort of thing. All right, Councilmember Qualley?
Nothing for me.
All right, Scott?
I'm good.
All right, Sean, anything else?
The only thing I got is there's gonna be a hole in the road in Wayzetta Boulevard overnight, because they brought the wrong tapping saddle.
What are they doing there?
Putting a new service line for the vet, water service line.
But they're deep, they were like, really deep.
Last week, it was gas service. This week, it's water.
Yeah, and they patched it up, and then I thought it was done, and now they dug it up again.
They didn't start till eleven o'clock this morning, too, so they just called me when I was in the meeting here. They said they gotta come back tomorrow, so.
Okay.
So, watch out for the hole?
Huh?
Yes.
Watch out for the hole, yeah.
All right, all right, thank you. Jeanette?
Nothing, thank you.
All right, Amanda?
Nothing for me, thank you.
Okay. Looking at our calendar here, we've got on Thursday is a state and city holiday, Juneteenth, also most freedom day, so don't, don't come in to pay your water bill that day or anything. And then our next meeting on July first, potential work session and city council meeting. And as heads up for Jeanette, I think this happens every year, but of course, yeah, night to night, national night out, whatever, is, has been decided this year, and it's gonna be the, that usual first Tuesday in August, so did learn that the other day, so figured that I was gonna get closer.
I will be out on that meeting. I was gonna look into attending it remotely, if that's, do I chat with you, or I don't know how that's, happens?
The August first meeting?
Yes, or July first.
July first, okay, sorry. I'm sorry, first Tuesday, and July first. We can discuss the logistics of that, and whether.
Um, we can discuss the logistics of that and whether it's feasible.
Okay.
You would need to be at a notice of public location.
And so there's breaking news on that, I don't think it's, I don't think it's effective till August first, but I learned last week from League of Minnesota Cities, I guess, Speaker at Hanover's hat, that they actually changed a lot to make it, to reduce the, um, sort of the red tape with, with having remote meetings, and you don't have to be in a public place anymore and that kind of thing, so, which is nice. Um, she didn't know a lot of more, uh, she didn't know the effective date, but at some point that will be changing, and doesn't mean we're, we're all gonna be, you know, not here, come to these anymore, but, uh, we're...
Set your phone there.
Uh, yeah, it'll make a, and we, you know, we shouldn't need to interrupt, uh, a vacation here and there either, but if we have a need of, of super, you know, four-fifths vote or something like that, we can certainly look at, there's more options available now than there was in the past, so that'll be good.
Perfect.
Yeah. All right, so, uh, otherwise, July first will be our next meeting then. All right, anything else, last call?
Hey, one more thing that you're, you just reminded me of, uh, speaking of July first, so after, uh, July first, twenty twenty-five, any boaters, uh, operators born after June thirtieth, twenty, two thousand four, will need a watercraft operator's permit to operate motorboats or personal watercraft in the state of Minnesota, so, um, yeah.
Is that different?
So, uh, basically, anybody that's, uh, under twenty-one.
Is it now?
Uh, no, now you don't have to, um, but they say as of July first, twenty twenty-five. I don't know, to, look up, just...
Twenty twenty-eight, everybody has to have one.
By twenty twenty-eight, yeah.
Really?
Yeah. But they're starting with, uh, with teenagers, basically.
Money grab.
And, uh...
Thirty-five dollar online permit.
Yeah, there's an online course, my daughter took it, it's not that hard, but...
More money.
Good to know.
Evidently, I think it's for safe, somewhat legislative, maybe.
Well, that's what they say.
Voting for forty years, how many people are gonna go get it?
Sure.
Now they're gonna have to.
Yeah.
I lost it.
All right.
Well, the cup is in the house.
What's that?
Oh.
The cup's in the house?
Yeah. Stanley cup.
Oh, okay.
No one watches that.
Kind of randomly, okay, cool. All right, if there's no objection, I'll adjourn the meeting by general consent. Hearing none, meeting's adjourned at seven twenty-four P.M.
So nobody watches the Stanley cup?
No, it's not watching.
Yeah, well, yeah, they, they could take it, read it too.
Well, then, so was, was it Indiana?